If you'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call, starting with Steve.
Steve Moll.
Genevieve Nisha.
Jay Patrick.
Eunice Landry. Sandy Wyatt.
Bob Collison.
Heidi Dufresne.
Peter Levitt.
Lila Adams.
Caitlin Bean.
Okay, next up is public input. Any public input? Hi, and if you just give your name.
Just bring that down. Oh, no, that's fine, I'm short. Hi, so Vicki Sweetsie, Alton resident, teacher at Prospect Mountain High School, and I'm the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association president. So, just to clarify, I would just like to know what's happening with the reconsideration for the hearing in regard to the ULP that was filed last December. Is that being moved forward?
This is public input, so we're listening to what you have to say.
Okay, so it is my understanding that it is being moved forward, so that I have some information that I would like to disseminate, please. So, you'll find I have a packet, I don't know if everybody's seen, the Public Employees' Labor Relation Board hearing to the unfair labor practice that was filed last December, but I'll be referring to it a couple of times throughout this, and then I also have a timeline of events that have occurred. So I just want this on the public record as far as because this is something that is being moved forward and it's been a substantial cost to taxpayers, that I think that people need to understand the process that has moved forward thus far. So to start with, in October 2014, during the negotiation, we with the school board and the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, the school board negotiations committee put a proposal forward.
Excuse me, point of order, please.
Yes.
To the chair, would you ask the speaker if she is speaking for and representing the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association at this time in public input?
I am representing the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association at this time.
So my question to the chair, is in this official business, it should be taken up on the agenda as opposed to public input, which is just somebody from the public making an inquiry or a statement to the board?
I know that my feeling is that we're being handed several pages worth of information that we haven't had a chance to look at, so my question would be to you.
One of the pages is the hearing that everybody, I'm assuming, has seen.
Point of order, I'd like a ruling before this goes any further, please, that whether this should be something officially, since she is officially representing the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, okay, and that we are limited in how we can answer, whether this should be an agenda item as opposed to a public input.
It should have been an agenda item.
I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just wanting to inform the public of the process that has occurred. And what led us to this, seeing that there is a motion to reconsider the hearing of the Public Employees' Labor Relation decision.
I'd like to make a motion to the chair and to the board that we schedule this for an official agenda item and take it up formally as it should be. This is a legal issue, and this is not something that should be just informally done, okay, on a whim.
So we have a motion that this should be on the agenda rather than in public input. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So the question is, should this be something that is done on the agenda rather than in public input?
So that we are able to read the material, okay, and have as much information as the individual who is talking about it at the same time.
My feeling is if this is strictly a means for you to get the information out, basically this sheet.
Yeah, that's just a timeline of what I'm discussing. No, I'm not necessarily discussing that. I mean, I am referring to it, but I'm just, again, this is, today was the deadline to reconsider the hearing, which I assume, what I've been told, is that this is what the school board has decided, is to move forward with this hearing. So I do think it's time that the public understands what is involved and what has been involved thus far regarding time, finances, and the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, and what we have done thus far.
Madam Chairman, there's many ways of which this could have been accomplished. It could have been accomplished by putting it in the newspaper, number one. It could have been done through any type of social media, but because this is a formal legal issue, I think we have to be careful in how this is essentially disseminated. I don't have an issue with reading a piece of paper into the record if she is not a representative of the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, because she's not on the agenda, okay? If she wants to just read it in and then that's it, then that's fine, but to stand here and make an entire case and plead a case at a school board meeting, this may be the forum to do it, but it has to be on a formal agenda basis, not on an informal, "I'm gonna run it through" public input.
Okay, so the motion is that we not talk about this in public input, that this would be on the agenda at another meeting. So that's what we're voting on. All those in favor of Steve's motion that this go on to the agenda at a follow-up meeting, raise your hand. All those opposed? One. Okay. If you would like to just read this one sheet, we can allow you to do that.
No, thank you.
Okay, any other public input? Seeing none, I'll close public input.
I have some more, please, a separate issue. So I'm assuming this will be contested as well. But I would ask you to reconsider this, and I do apologize that this wasn't in the packet earlier due to vacation. We did not have this letter finished in time to give to the school board members, but this is in regards to the school board stipulation that teachers remain at Prospect Mountain High School until 3:00 PM.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
None of us have this paper yet.
No, no, I understand. I just have a question. Is the speaker speaking as a representative, excuse me, as a representative of the Prospect Mountain Teachers?
Association.
Association.
Yes, I am.
Thank you, of which she is an officer.
Yes, I am.
Okay, and again, I would say that if she is addressing us as an officer of the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, this should be an official agenda item, because again, this is a legal issue that is probably going before the PELRB.
If it's not addressed now, yes, it will go before the PELRB, and that's what I'm trying to avoid. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, and this should be on an official agenda as opposed to...
So are you making a motion that this also be on an agenda?
Yes, that this be on the next available agenda.
Okay, so I have a motion that this information also be on a follow-up agenda. Is there a second?
Can I make one comment, please, just in regards to this?
No, we've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second to Steve's motion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat it, Steve?
My motion is because this is gonna be a legal item, absolutely, that this be an official formal item on the next agenda and not be taken up in public input.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of having these two sheets also discussed as an agenda item in an upcoming meeting, signified by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Those opposed? One opposed. So this will also be on a follow-up agenda. Do you have anything else for public input?
Yes, I wish you could reconsider, especially the second item, because if teachers are going to be expected to be here...
Point of order, we've already made a decision that this is gonna be taken up at the next available agenda item, and it's not to be discussed in public input. She is an officer of the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association.
Okay.
It's a legal issue.
Any further public input? Not seeing any, I will close public input. Okay, agenda review.
Madam Chairman.
Can we possibly remove anything?
From...
Can you pin it?
Yeah, what would you like to take off?
Madam Chairman.
I think we can maybe go through quickly, yes.
I'd like to move negotiation update to non-public.
Anything else on the agenda? Anybody wanna move the agenda as presented except for the negotiations update?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lila. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, approval of the minutes of December 6th.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of December 6th as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lila. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Steve, I think you need to abstain.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Superintendent's Report.
Start with the student.
All right, we'll start with the student.
So, this past month has been partly taken up by vacations, so we didn't have too much going on, but as of right now, as far as sports goes, our boys' basketball team has been having a hard season so far. They've yet to win any games, but they've only played three so far, so they still have a bit to catch up with. Our girls' basketball team has won six games and hasn't lost anything. Our ski teams, they've had one meet, they're doing pretty well, and track team's doing very well. We've had a couple people place first and second in different events at their prior meets. So this past month, our band and chorus concert was on the 21st of December. Performances all went really, really well. It was a great night. And then we also had two chorus run-out concerts, one on December 3rd and one on December 9th. One was at the Gilman Museum, and the other was at the North Barnstead Congregational Church. They both were very successful. In addition to that, as far as music goes, our pep band is currently playing Friday night basketball games this year, and they're having a fun time doing that. So any Friday night that there's a basketball game here, they'll be playing all throughout the game and during halftime. My last, one of my last things is that our school play has started up. They had additions before break. The play this year is going to be Suzical Musical. They're getting ready to have a lot of fun with that. They were going to start rehearsals today, but due to weather, that got canceled. And my last thing is that the last day before winter vacation, we had a winter bash, which was a half-day full of lots of games and fun activities, where all the different classes got to kind of battle each other competitively, but also having lots of fun to win overall during the day. We had music videos that we had to make, and there was different events in the gym, like relay races and a piating contest, so lots of fun to watch. Sophomores won, much to dismay of the senior class, but we came in second by only a few points, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Superintendent's Report.
I'll keep this brief and light of the weather this evening. All I have to report this evening is the post-secondary placements. If you've had a chance to see the board on your way past guidance, were up to 69 of 128 students in this year's senior class have post-secondary placements. That's about 54 percent.
That's great.
So we're on par. This is the big month. This is the month where we see a lot of movement, so keep an eye on the board.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, just a couple of quick things. This coming Friday, we have Alumni Day. We have about a dozen former graduates coming back to speak with this year's seniors. We have members from, or alum from, the class of 2016 going back, as far as the class of 2010, coming back to speak. In two weeks, mid-year exams begin. That will also, the conclusion of mid-year exams will begin second semester, beginning of third quarter. It's also around that time that we begin the scheduling process for next year, so one of the items, action items for this evening is approving the program of studies, assuming that goes according to plan. We'll be sending that off to print within the next week or so, and then begin that scheduling process. And in doing that, Mr. Carloni and I, the guidance director, we take a trip down to the elementary school or to the middle schools, speak to the eighth graders about transitioning to high school. We also bring a select group of interested students up to the Lakes Region Tech Center at Kingswood, so they can learn a little bit more about the options that they have there as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, information, action items. Genevieve, the policy committee update.
I was wondering if maybe Bob could help me out with this.
Okay, well, there was no policy committee today, as we typically have had one scheduled before this meeting, but we had a lack of quorum, so. The only thing I will say is, one of the items on the policy for the policy committee to have reviewed today was the eighth grade grading policy for math and foreign language classes and how they count as high school credits. We pulled the comparative policies. We've got them all together to be reviewed, and so we'll postpone that until next month, and then we'll present that at the board so that we can get the clarification and maybe finally get that passed. Other than that, it was a pretty easy docket.
So then these policies, EEAA, the video/audio surveillance on school property...
When we get down to those, maybe Peter or Genevieve will be able to...
Okay, all right. That it, Genevieve? You all set with yours?
Yep.
Okay. Action items, update on teacher for global classroom from Mrs. Sweetsie.
We received a letter in your packet from Mrs. Sweetsie and the IREX organization. She's thanking the board for the approval of her time off for the global studies class scores, and she's found that her international field experience will be in Morocco from March 13th through March 28th of this spring.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Expect a good recipe for couscous when you get back.
Okay, next up then are the policies.
Okay.
On the EEAA, GAC, GBGD.
These have already gone through the policy committee, and these are recommended for approval by the board. They've already had their first reading. Policy EEAA, if you'll recall, last year we had a video and audio surveillance on school property policy that eliminated the use of audio and videotaping in classrooms. So the legislators realized it was a mistake the way the language was written, so it was rewritten as it's reflected now, so that for educational purposes, students with IEPs, stoops in film classes can use audio and videotaping.
So is this boilerplate?
This is the changed boilerplate policy, yes. So it's already gone, as I said, through the first reading, so we're looking for this to be approved this evening.
So we need a motion then to approve these three policies.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve both in first and second reading of these policies, because they are in fact boilerplate and we're taking the 100 percent recommendation of the New Hampshire School Board Association.
So we'll do a first, second, final?
Yes.
I'll second that. Was that your motion?
That's a motion, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of those?
I just have one item. How often do you find that if a person, first of all, I can't imagine there's a lot of lost time due to workers' comp in a school setting, but I may be wrong. And is it typical for there to be temporary duties assigned?
For an EEAA, it's the surveillance.
He said all.
Oh, 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 sorry.
What do you mean by temporary duties?
Well, temporary alternative duty, usually it's light duty.
Oh, given the nature of what people are doing, though, heavy lifting, you know, the accommodations that we can accommodate using the escalator or the elevator versus the stairs, no one's required to lift anything, so if they get doctors and workman's comp to be back to school, it's usually with some type of parameter.
Right.
That we do the best we can to accommodate. In my experience here, the past 10 years, we've never had a situation that we couldn't accommodate.
Well, this is for custodians and all of that, too.
Well, and that's what my question is, is if someone's not able to do their job that they're assigned to, do you, I mean, a custodian can't lift, can't do, can't mow lawn, can't do what he needs to do on a daily basis, do you have filing, I mean, is that the typical type of thing that you do?
To be honest with you, we have not, we have not run into that with any of the people that would be doing that type of manual labor. Our workman's comp cases at this point have been with teachers, so there's always something that someone can be doing.
Right, but here's what I'm cautioning...
We had an older case, custodian and ladders. Wasn't supposed to be on ladders for a while, so, you know, yeah, we can make those kinds of accommodations. If somebody has a sprained wrist or something and they can't lift what they normally would lift temporarily, we can make some accommodations, yeah.
And the reason why I'm asking is, and I know this firsthand, if they're out of work, the workers' comp, Primex is paying. If they come back to work light duty, if they're given busy work, now we're paying, and we're also paying for the person who is doing the job that they were supposed to do. So, while it's all about getting people back to work, I just want to be sure that it's up to the principal or the superintendent, but primarily the principal, to determine if it's in everyone's best interest to give a person who is not able to do their job busy work just for the sake of giving them busy work.
Well, I think, excuse me, our protection on page 14, second page, insofar as it is reasonably possible in compliance with RSA, the school will provide temporary alternative work duties. So, you know, we look within reason. I mean, it would be unreasonable for us to have somebody who normally is changing lights filing for a long period of time. Yeah, I get what you're saying.
All right.
This was primarily developed with Primex because of the payment process. Primex's payments did not start on the first day of injury. It's kind of, you know, it's a catch-up process, and I think the expectation has been that, you know, as soon as the injury occurs, plan is settled and Primex begins.
Primex is monopoly.
Right.
So they'll do what they want.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, so we want to have this as a final reading for these three policies. All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, 2017-18 Program of Studies Change. Jay?
Yep, on pages 15 and 16 outlines additions to the program studies primarily, and then a couple of rewording of a couple of things. So just if you're looking on page 15, you can see the two arc courses. Over the past couple of years, we've been talking and implementing these engineering programs, and so next year we're putting two more into place, which is an intro, and then a level two, and we have intention in the 18, 19 school year to offer a third level of it as well. And really what we're trying to do is create opportunity, a unique opportunity, to attract kids into STEM-related fields. There seems to be a demand for it, not only here, but on the outside as well. With English, we have the one course that we're offering, music, a couple of new offerings, or a few new offerings and a name change. Select Choir now going to be referred to as Chamber of Singers, and you can see the PE, the Science, and Cut 01, new courses as well. We've included everything. These are cut and paste of what they would look like in the program of studies, to how many credits they're valued at, to how many or what credit graduation requirement they fulfill, as well as grade level that they're able to...
Why is Engineering Design 2, Mr. twice?
So Engineering Design 2, the way we are, the way that it's been designed is that you can get a credit for it, not only in Engineering, but you'll also be able to get a credit for it in Science as well.
Not the same?
The same course.
The same course?
Yes.
Do you take it twice?
Nope, you can take one.
No, you take it once, and you can do either or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion then to...
Yep, and the only other thing I want to remind you is that what you're seeing here are the changes, or the additions to the program of studies. The program of studies still remains a forty-something-page-long book that has all of our current offerings. Just because it's in here does not necessarily mean that it's going to run. So if we have, say, a geography class in here, if the demand is not there for it, the student demand is not there for it, I'm not going to waste the resources on having a teacher teach it. So just want to remind you of that as well, that admin and the counseling office reserves the right not to run certain courses, what you all approve or what the opportunities are. And also, there are some courses that may be listed as a double block period that may not end up being a double block period, depending on, again, the demand and the use of resources.
Okay, then, I need a motion to accept this 2017-18 Program of Studies Change.
So move.
It was like Peter, seconded by Genevieve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, final budget approval. Eunice?
We met, we had several work sessions with the Joint Budget Committee, and then their final voting. They cut $500 from library media in the periodicals, but the biggest item that they wanted reduced was the cost of oil. We had budgeted it at $275. What they recommended was $220. They're also aware that other towns and schools around us have locked in at $185, so that's the reduction that they're recommending of $20,900. And the Finance Committee is recommending that we take and adopt their recommended budget, and that would be, hold on, $8,285,764.74. So moved.
Second.
It's also supported by the Alton Budget Committee.
Right, they actually, pooters to them, because they actually met the night before and voted in all on with whatever the Joint Budget Committee did, so.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Who moved and seconded?
She moved. I seconded.
And a big thank you came from Joint Budget Committee to the board and to the administration for doing a great job on the budget.
Thank you. Okay, Personnel Report.
We have three positions filled by four people to report tonight. First is for a second shift custodian, replace Mark Estee. It's Joseph Urcolino. Joseph Urcolino from Farmington, New Hampshire, has been recommended. The second is the unified basketball coach, Richard Fortier, one of our teachers, has been recommended. And for the spirit squad coaches, the cheerleading squad, Corey Rue and Mark Anthony, as the coaches. They will split the stipends for that position. We had one of the biggest groups of students in years go out for a spirit squad and couldn't find a coach. So, these two gentlemen have stepped up, got their physical education background and experience there.
And I want to remind you that Mark Anthony was the 2013 Health and Phys ed Teacher of the Year, which includes dance, so.
That's right. We're expecting some really good dance moves, right, Charlie?
Question please?
Yes.
I don't know how far spirit goes in this school, but in other schools, there are flyers. And I know these two are the default choices. Are they experienced in knowing how to handle flyers, you know, in a cheerleading environment?
There are two levels of cheering, and one of them is what they call, you're stunting, meaning you're leaving the ground. You have to go through a certain course that the state offers, the NHIAA offers that course, for any coach who wants to allow their kids to stunt. We made the collective decision that our guys would not go through that, and all of our girls would be grounded, meaning they never leave the ground.
Sounds like a good idea.
And just as a point of information, Alton Central School, for the first time, has a cheerleading club by an ex, that's being run by somebody, I guess, who has cheerleading experience, if you'd want to get in contact with that individual.
I think we tried to defer.
Okay, thank you. Just a thought.
Okay, so we have three, three things. We have custodian, Joseph Urcolino. We have unified basketball coach, Richard Fortier. And spirit squad coaches, Corey Rue and Mark Anthony. I'll make a motion that we accept those nominations. Is there a second?
Stay second.
Steve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Next up is public input.
I would just like to know, the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association sent a letter in regards to the December 6 statement that was read regarding the midterm exams, and I would just like to know if everybody has seen that letter, the memo that I sent.
I haven't read it.
I could read it for you if you would like.
We have copies here, too. One, two, three.
If I could address and read the letter, please?
Sure, you can read it.
Thank you. At the Prospect Mountain High School Board meeting-
Well, wait a minute. I'll read it. How's that? Because it's addressed to me.
Thank you.
And it says, "From the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, at the PMHS School Board meeting on Tuesday, December 6, 2016, a statement was read regarding the motion to postpone the January 2017 midterm final exam schedule." The statement read that "The teachers at PMHS are not adequately professionally prepared for the change, and the loss of nine hours of early release time constitutes a hardship. This wording makes it appear as if the faculty is incapable and incompetent, which it is not in fact the case. Though the loss of such a large amount of grading time was indeed a concern for many association members, the PMTA's sole legal issue was that the new schedule constituted a change in working conditions that must be negotiated. The PMTA believes that its members are prepared to meet any professional challenge. Sincerely, Vicky Sweetsie." So that's the letter, so now we've all heard, okay?
Thank you.
Any other public input? Seeing none, I'll close public input. And we need to have a non-public.
91-821-A.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public session under 91-2, from new IA.
Second. Steve?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We are now in non-public.
Now we're paying, and we're also paying for the person who is doing the job that they were supposed to do. So, while it's all about getting people back to work, I just want to be sure that it's up to the principal, or the superintendent, but primarily the principal, to determine if it's in everyone's best interest to give a person who is not able to do their job busy work, just for the sake of giving them busy work.
Well, I think, our protection on page 14, second page, insofar as it is reasonably possible in compliance with RSA, the school will provide temporary alternative work duties. So, you know, we look within reason. I mean, it would be unreasonable for us to have somebody who normally is changing lights filing for a long period of time. Yeah, I get what you're saying.
All right.
This was primarily developed with Primex because of the payment process. Primex's payments did not start on the first day of injury. It's timed.
Oh, I know.
You know, it's a catch-up process, and I think the expectation has been that, you know, as soon as the injury occurs, the claim is settled and Primex begins.
Primex is monopoly.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. So we want to have this as a final reading for these three policies. All those in favor of that? Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. 2017-18 Program of Studies Change. Jay?
Yep. On pages 15 and 16 outlines additions to the program studies, primarily. And then a couple of rewording of a couple of things. So just if you're looking on page 15, you can see the two R courses. Over the past couple of years, we've been talking and implementing these engineering programs. And so, next year, we're putting two more into place, which is an intro and then a level two. And we have intention in the 18, 19 school year to offer a third level of it as well. And really what we're trying to do is create opportunity, a unique opportunity, to attract kids into STEM-related fields. There seems to be a demand for it, not only here, but on the outside as well. With English, we have the one course that we're offering, music, a couple of new offerings, a few new offerings, and a name change, Select Choir now going to be referred to as Chamber of Singers. And you can see the PE, the science, and cut out one, new courses as well. We've included everything. These are cut and paste of what they would look like in the program of studies, to how many credits they're valued at, to how many or what credit graduation requirement they fulfill, as well as grade level debt they're able.
Why is Engineering Design 2, Mr. Twyman?
So, Engineering Design 2, the way we are, the way that it's been designed is that you can get a credit for it, not only in Engineering, but you'll also be able to get a credit for it in Science as well.
Not the same?
The same course.
The same course?
Yes.
Do you take it twice?
Nope, you can take it one time.
No, you take it once, and you can do either or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion then, to?
Yep, and the only other thing I want to remind you is that what you're seeing here are the changes, or the additions to the program of studies. The program of study still remains a 40-something-page-long book that has all of our current offerings. Just because it's in here does not necessarily mean that it's going to run. So if we have, say, a geography class in here, if the demand is not there for it, the student demand is not there for it, I'm not going to waste the resources on having a teacher teach it. So, just want to remind you of that as well, that admin and the counseling office reserves the right not to run certain courses, what you all approve or what
You'll have to.
the opportunities are. And also, there are some courses that may be listed as a double block period that may not end up being a double block period, depending on, again, the demand and the use of resources.
Okay, then, I need a motion to accept this 2017-18 Program of Studies Change. I'll second Peter, seconded by Genevieve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Final budget approval. Eunice?
We met, we had several work sessions with the Joint Budget Committee, and then their final voting. They cut $500 from library media in the periodicals, but the biggest item that they wanted reduced was the cost of oil. We had budgeted at $275. What they recommended was $220. They're also aware that other towns and schools around us have locked in at $185. So that's a reduction that they're recommending of $20,900. And the Finance Committee is recommending that we take and adopt their recommended budget, and that would be, hold on, So moved.
Second.
It's also supported by the Alton Budget Committee.
Right, they actually, kudos to them, because they actually met the night before and voted to go along with whatever the Joint Budget Committee did, so.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Who moved and seconded? She moved. I seconded.
Got it. And a big thank you came from Joint Budget Committee to the board and to the administration for doing a great job on the budget.
Thank you. Okay, personnel report.
We have three positions built by four people to report tonight. First is for a second shift custodian, replaces Mark Estey. Joseph Urcolino from Farmington, New Hampshire, has been recommended. The second is the unified basketball coach, Richard Fortier, one of our teachers, has been recommended. And for the spirit squad coaches, the cheerleading squad, Corey Rue and Mark Anthony, as the coaches. They will split the stipends for that position. We had one of the biggest groups of students in years go out for a spirit squad and couldn't find a coach. So, these two gentlemen have stepped up, got their physical education background and experience there.
And I want to remind you that Mark Anthony was the 2013 Health and Phys ed Teacher of the Year, which includes dance, so.
That's right. We're expecting some really good dance moves, right, Charlie?
Did you order a scary?
And pongs.
Question please?
Yes.
I don't know how far spirit goes in this school, but in other schools, there are flyers. And I know these two are the default choices. Are they experienced in knowing how to handle flyers, you know, in a cheerleading environment?
There are two levels of cheering, and one of them is what they call, you're stunting, meaning you're leaving the ground. You have to go through a certain course that the state offers, the NHIAA offers that course, for any coach who wants to allow their kids to stunt. We made the collective decision that our guys would not go through that, and all of our girls would be grounded, meaning they never leave the ground.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
And just as a point of information, Alton Central School, for the first time, has a cheerleading club by an ex, that's being run by somebody, I guess, who has cheerleading experience, if you'd want to get in contact with that individual.
I think we tried to defer.
Okay, thank you. Just a thought.
Okay, so we have three, three things. We have custodian, Joseph Urcolino. We have unified basketball coach, Richard Fortier. And spirit squad coaches, Corey Rue and Mark Anthony. I'll make a motion that we accept those nominations. Is there a second?
Stay second.
Steve, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Next up is public input.
I would just like to know, the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association sent a letter in regards to the December 6 statement that was read regarding the midterm exams, and I would just like to know if everybody has seen that letter, the memo that I sent.
I haven't read it.
I could read it for you if you would like.
We have copies here, too. One, two, three.
If I could address and read the letter, please?
Sure, you can read it.
Thank you. At the Prospect Mountain High School Board meeting-
Well, wait a minute. I'll read it. How's that? Because it's addressed to me.
Thank you.
And it says, "From the Prospect Mountain Teachers Association, at the PMHS School Board meeting on Tuesday, December 6, 2016, a statement was read regarding the motion to postpone the January 2017 midterm final exam schedule." The statement read that "The teachers at PMHS are not adequately professionally prepared for the change, and the loss of nine hours of early release time constitutes a hardship. This wording makes it appear as if the faculty is incapable and incompetent, which it is not in fact the case. Though the loss of such a large amount of grading time was indeed a concern for many association members, the PMTA's sole legal issue was that the new schedule constituted a change in working conditions that must be negotiated. The PMTA believes that its members are prepared to meet any professional challenge. Sincerely, Vicky Sweetsie." So that's the letter, so now we've all heard, okay?
Thank you.
Any other public input? Seeing none, I'll close public input. And we need to have a non-public.
91-821-A.
I'll make a motion that we go into non-public session under 91-2, from new IA.
Second. Steve?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
We are now in non-public.